School Board President, I am just waiting to be sure that the numbers of our participants populates all the way up to where we think they're going to be. And then I'll get started. We're up over 100. All right, folks, it looks like we have everybody online. Welcome to the Seneca Valley School District's School Board Work Session for November 2nd here on, here in 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a slight tap of the gavel. As I do, I ask that you join me for a brief moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. We next move to our Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll ask Ms. Andresi, our Communications Director, to introduce our guest tonight for his I-Led the Pledge. Ms. Andresi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Our I-Led the Pledge student this evening is Damari Jackson. Damari is a second grader at Evan City Elementary School. Let's welcome him to the microphone. So just to tell you a little bit about Damari before we do the pledge, he's here tonight with his mother, Ty, his brothers, Drayden and Demir, and his grandma. Wait, guys? Good to see everybody. He was nominated this evening by Evan City Elementary Principal Lori Pendred and Assistant Principal Andrew Teddy. And I'd like to welcome and thank Mr. Teddy for joining us tonight in support of Damari. So Damari tells us his favorite subjects at school are reading, gym, art, and music. He also loves to swim, ride his bike, and spend time with his mom, grandma, and his brothers. Damari and I were talking a little bit earlier about his love of reading, and he was telling me his favorite book. And I was wondering, Damari, can you share with everyone here your favorite book and what you like about it?
The Laugh Along Mystery. So what I like about it is that they go to the zoo and they peek and they find, after they, hours of zoo, they, they find, they ride their bikes, and then they find a big rock. And then there's a note under a pie. Then they peek behind a big rock, and then they find a big pie.
We were talking earlier, they're on a very big adventure in that book, right? Today's a little bit of an adventure, too. Damari is now going to say the pledge. So I would invite everyone in our auditorium and at home, if they are able to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Damari, when you're ready, you can go ahead and start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, in the first of all, with clarity and justice.
Excellent job. Earlier this evening, we gave Damari his I-Led the Pledge Seneca Valley shirt and his medal, which I think is his favorite part, and some Seneca swag. We also shared with his brothers as well, some Seneca gear. So thank you again for being here with us this evening. Great job, Damari.
Wonderful. Lot of excitement. With that, then, Lisa, if I could ask you to call the role for tonight's meeting?
Ms. Bradle. Mr. DiTulio.
Here.
Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Hester.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Nickel.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Whittle.
Here.
Mr. Widowsen.
Here.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll turn to our information reports. We'll start off with student and staff recognition. Ms. Andresi, if you would please.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I'll be happy to. We have one item of recognition this evening. Seneca Valley seniors Ty Brinkley, Vincent Horvath, Jaclyn Coe, Katie Monahan, Kaitlin Moore, Ashley Patterson, and Brenna Worble have been named commended students in the 2021 National Merit Scholarship Program. A letter of commendation from the school and National Merit, which conducts the program, was presented by the principal, Mr. Robert Check, to these scholastically talented seniors. Although they will not continue in the 2021 Competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, commended students placed among the top 50,000 scores of more than 1.5 million students who entered the 2021 competition. And if you'd like to read more, there is information in your backup. Under dates to remember, tomorrow, Tuesday, November 3rd is Election Day. November 7th, we will be hosting an SAT testing program beginning at 7:30 a.m. in the senior high. We currently have 115 students registered. Next Monday, November 9th, we'll be releasing the report of student progress for grades 7 through 12. We'll also be back here at 7:00 p.m. for the School Board Regular Meeting. It will also be featured not only in the auditorium but on Zoom. November 11th is Veterans Day. November 13th is the Academy of Choices End of First Trimester for grades K to 6. And then the end of trimester for grades K to 6 for everyone outside of cyber will take place on November 18th. November 20th is the first day of all PIA winter sports. And then November 25th through the 30th is our Thanksgiving break. This is a district holiday. Therefore, there's no school for students and staff. And then finally, December 7th is our annual School Board Reorganization Meeting. That'll take place at 5:00 p.m. here in the auditorium. And unless you have questions, Mr. President, that is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Andresi. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Ms. Andresi? All right, super. Thank you, Ms. Andresi. We have a few more information reports. And the next one that is up is, I'll admit, is one I was most looking forward to this evening. That is for our new Aquatics Center public artwork. I have here that it's a presentation by Amanda Mallon, the Assistant Principal at the Senior High School, Erin Schaefer, an art teacher at the Intermediate High School, Jason Woolslayer, an art teacher at the Senior High School, and senior students. And I hope I pronounce this correctly. Simran Jayaraman and Brian Whitney. So I'm not sure who's coming to either the microphone. It's virtual. So then I'll turn to my screen.
Evening, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I too am so excited about sharing this with everybody here on the screen and everybody in the auditorium. I have had the honor to work with our art professional learning community. And these guys have some incredible ideas. And really, tonight, we wanted to sit down and talk with you just about how this, this idea came to fruition and how students have really taken this project and made it their own. And I don't want to speak anymore. I want to, I want to pass the microphone here to the, the teachers who have been driving this and the students who have been leading it. So I'm first going to pass the, the mic over here to Mr. Erin Schaefer, who had a really unique resource and knew a really special artist that he brought into our, our virtual, or excuse me, the time, who was a in-person PLC pre-pandemic. So Erin?
Hey. Well, thanks again for this opportunity to present tonight and kind of share where we're at in this project. Give you a brief summary of the lifespan of this project. It started about two years ago in the fall with Amanda as our facilitator in our PLC curricular meetings. And we had to come up with initiatives. And our, one of our primary initiatives was to install public art on the campus at Seneca Valley. So through brainstorming, we came up with some ideas of how to approach this. And initially, we were looking to repurpose or upcycle desks that were being thrown away, something similar to what you're seeing on the screen now with the bicycles, but creating a public arts piece from the desks in a manner like this. The desks, however, were already tagged or something else, so we weren't able to use those. So we were kind of at a standstill. We, I ended up seeing, being influenced by a piece by Elizabeth Clemmons, Clemmons, who is a mosaic artist, and got in touch with her and to see if she would be interested in doing something with us as a visiting artist with our students. And we came up with the idea initially of doing a, a school district map that would be interactive and illustrative, featuring some of the places to see and to know historically in the district. And we got to talking about places to put that mural or that mosaic on campus. And we kind of came to the conclusion that a new construction installation would be best so that we could accommodate for the installation of the mosaic piece, which led us to the natatorium. However, with the natatorium, the, the idea of the district map didn't really seem to fit the theme of the building. So a meeting that Elizabeth and I had with the administrative team in the summer of 2019 led us to this narrative mural that was based on the idea of swimming be, and diving being a lifelong activity that you can enjoy from early childhood on through later ages into the twilight. So that was kind of the drive behind this imagery. But we came to the conclusion that we needed to get more input from students instead of just coming from, straight from the artist and from the influences of the teacher. So we went back to the drawing board and assembled a team. We invited other cross-curricular disciplines to, to get involved with this as well. And Jason Woolslayer, at this point, really took over, being the fact that he had access to the senior high level students that would, as well as the intermediate students that he could pull from and, and, and put together a team that would, that would facilitate, he could facilitate them to come up with an idea that would work best for this space. So Jason, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. And thanks for your time, everyone. And again, we, we really appreciate the opportunity to show you what the students have come up with and, and really talk about, you know, this process and how it has sort of evolved from, you know, where it started to where, to where it ultimately is now. And through the, through our art PLC, we really had great leadership with Amanda Mallon, kind of giving us a lot of flexibility and freedom to kind of look at different opportunities within the district. And this has always been a goal of the art department, is to bring about more public art to Seneca Valley. There's a lot of spaces that could be enhanced that we feel, you know, we have, you know, not only the, the art department to do it, but the, some of the best students around. So we're really excited for the opportunity and we, we thank you for the time. So we, we all agreed in our PLC that we should probably, you know, like literally go back to the drawing board and start, start from scratch. And we all agreed that the students should be driving this, this idea. And the students should be taking ownership in what is going to be a, a public space and a useful space for many years. So we needed to start talking about what public art is and where it can be and many ways and styles in which to work. But we needed to assemble a team first. And we wanted this team to be an eclectic team, not just of students that we had in our art classes, but we opened up the opportunity for students in tech ed and really in any classes that had an interest in helping with this design process and coming up with, you know, the, the ideas for what will ultimately be a mosaic for the Aquatics Center. And we also invited the swim team to get involved, too, which, which they did. It's been, it was a great collaboration. So we started off by kind of talking about what, you know, what street or what art is in the public space. And I'm not going to give you every slide here. We started to look backward before we came to the idea of where we're at. And we started to look at, you know, even works from the WPA that were created during the depression. Looked at mosaics and murals really from, you know, multiple cultures. We looked at, you know, street art and contemporary art that happens in the public space. And how can this space affect people? And we wanted to talk about, you know, how this mural can not only look good but have a Seneca Valley narrative and maybe some storytelling. So we kind of looked at not only, you know, you know, parts that's known. I thought I deleted some of these slides. But art that are from lesser-known people and how like public art and street art can become more of a community involvement. And it creates more of an inviting space. And we talked about how some of the artists that were, you know, not very well-known, you know, even a few years ago, are doing public spaces and full-size buildings now that their work has become, you know, popular in the public forum. So we, you know, kind of flew through some of these ideas. And if you ever want to look at any of these pieces, I can share the, share the PowerPoint and the videos that we have up. But what we wanted to do is kind of talk in like a broad stroke about how many ways there are to make public art and how public art becomes a little bit more democratic than maybe go to a museum where you have to engage in it when you see it in the public space. So we talked about some of the artists that we looked at, you know, have transitioned into commercial art and how, you know, that commercial art can then be used for things like last year's Super Bowl tickets and going into like fashion and merchandising and how public art has this power and ability to not only provide positivity and hope and like, you know, just different, different ideas for the environment that it lives in. So we started talking about where this, where the idea was. And we kind of worked in this reverse engineering type process. So we, we talked with administration about what are, what are the must haves in this design? What are the things that the administration wants to see? What are the, what are the color schemes? What are the, what's the concept and theme? And then after we developed this, you know, student team, we started talking about reverse engineering. What are some murals that are effective? What makes them effective? And how can we Seneca Valleyize this? If that makes any sense. All right. So we, we took, and I'm going to pass to Simran in a second, and we'll talk for a few minutes. But our, our goal and our problem to solve was to solve a design problem that uses innovative art and composition skills that combine ideas from both A, the administration, and B, the student design team. So in our meetings, you know, there were many things that came up that were important from the student aspect as well as the swim team and then the must haves from the administration. So we, we do have two great student representatives with us tonight, Simran and Brian. And I'm going to pass the mic, I guess, to Simran and let her speak about maybe some of the design process from her perspective. And then Simran and Brian are both art students, and Brian is also a swimmer. He can speak about the perspective maybe from the swim team.
Thank you, Mr. Woolslayer. Thank you for having me here tonight. So like Mr. Woolslayer said, we had some meetings, and they were before school initially. And then eventually, we had a meeting during the school day during a few periods so we could gather everyone together and discuss all of the ideas about the administration and the student design team. So I can offer, as representing the student design team, I can talk about some of the different ideas we were considering when coming up with the design. If you could go to the next slide, Mr. Woolslayer. So here you can see some of the different things we brainstormed during our big meeting altogether. We talked about the different shapes we were going to include and whether we wanted to have waves, what shape they would look like, whether we were including divers, swimmers, and also the color scheme, which was a big thing we talked about because the administration wanted to stick to the Seneca color scheme. And we had to consider what kind of designs we, we could create that would stay within the color scheme but also have all the ideas we wanted to incorporate. So if you could go to the next slide.
We keep going.
So this was one of the ideas that we started with, and we were able to incorporate some of the waves and swimmers. And on the next slide. Here, we also added, some of the students talked about including the lanes, the swimming lanes from a different perspective and the finish line. And on the next slide. So this is a similar idea. And then if you could go to the next slide. Here, we talked about another thing that a lot of the students were considering was having waves that go onto the other walls. Initially, we were looking at a wall that was in a position where we wanted the waves to come off of the first wall and look, and go onto the next walls. So we were talking about considering ideas like that. And then on the next design, we also considered including the audience because a lot of the swimmers mentioned that that was an important aspect of the swimming event. So we wanted to think about including the audience. So these were just a few of the different ideas we considered as a student team. And now I'll pass it on to Brian because he can talk a bit more about the swimmer's perspective in our ideas.
Okay, thank you, Simran. And thank you to everyone else for having us here. I know for me and everyone else on the swim team, it was really important to us to have tiles that are in our current pool onto the new pool as the mural. So what we wanted to do is whenever we start the new mural, we wanted to take some of the tiles in that pool and put them in there. Because I don't know if most people have been in the IHS pool, but it's not the best pool. It's not. It's really, it's a, it's an old pool. So this new pool and having this mural in there is such an exciting thing for all the swimmers, even me, who's a senior, who might not even be able to swim to it. It's still so exciting for all the future swimmers. And then another thing that we wanted to do, as Mr. Woolslayer mentioned and Mr. Schaefer, was having the swimmer chants. So for varsity meets, we used to do chants. We'd be like, um, sorry. We would do chants where we would, we'd just be like, go SV and stuff like that. And we wanted to include some of those. So that was the goal. And then, then we had to keep in mind that it's also going to be not just for swimmers. It's going to be a pool for everyone. It's going to be public. So we wanted to keep that in mind. And also the fact that, because like Simran said, we were going to have it on one wall and then have another wall. But now that we're only on the one wall, which I think is a better idea because then it keeps the SV logo in perspective. I'm sorry. Keeps the SV logo in perspective, and it just keeps the focal point on that. So. Thank you.
Thank you. So in the end, after we've had meetings and talked, this, the final design is what's on the screen now, kind of incorporating, you know, the, the entire wall, creating a symmetrical design that incorporates the wraparound waves as well as hopefully all aspects of competitive swimming in an aesthetically pleasing way. So this is where we're at right now. And we're, we're happy to answer any questions that anybody has and.
Okay.
Before we. Oh, thank you so much for everybody who has shared. I think you did such a wonderful job just explaining the whole process of, of where we started from and, and where we have come to, to this point as of November 2nd. And even this design right here, the wall has recently changed as we had the opportunity to go into the natatorium space and evaluate where would be the best location to display this beautiful display that we are going to be working on grades 7 through 12 as far as the actual implementation of the, the mosaic tiles once we start working with the artist, Elizabeth Clemmons. So what you see right now on the screen is, is the actual draw-up of the, from the student design team. And from here, we're hoping to meet with the artist and move this forward so that we can start getting into the work and getting student teams, grades 7 through 12, all art department students will have the opportunity to, to work in, in some capacity and get their hands on, on these tiles and start, start coming together as a community because that's what we wanted. We wanted this to be a 7 through 12 secondary campus project.
Well, thank you, all of you. I, that's the one question I was going to have. I mean, there's been a lot of collaboration to this point. I was curious about what kinds of collaboration and what kinds of sort of a team approach was possible on a go-forward. But I think you've already answered that question with regards to, you know, students getting their hands on tiles and digging in and being part of this. So I'll look around to the rest of the board, see who has any other comments or questions. Mr. DiTulio, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everyone for their collaboration. And, you know, it's also, you know, Brian, it, it's part of what we live in now with the Zoom world. You know, don't feel bad about that at all. I've had many animals jump into pictures over the meetings. It, it actually makes you feel more real. I'd also, you know, I'm not surprised that Mr. Woolslayer's involved in a project like this. That's a trade of the family, designing artwork for Seneca Valley. So I appreciate that. Jason, it's awesome to see that you've had a hand in this. And, and really just that everybody's so excited about making this, not just for today but for the future, and then bringing the past and making it part of this new construction. It makes me proud to, to be a member of the Seneca Valley School District and, and sit on this board. So thank you very much for, for doing all the hard work to get us here.
Thank you, Mr. DiTulio. Anyone else here in the room? As I look at the camera that's looking behind me, Ms. Bradle, I think?
Hi. Just a quick question. And first of all, thank you to the team. I think it's wonderful that we're bringing in the art department students from grades 7 through 12. So I love that participation. What is the perspective of the size? Just curious. Do you know that at this point?
Yeah, I can, it, it's roughly eight feet tall by 16 feet wide.
Thank you. That's awesome.
That is awesome.
And to clarify, so Elizabeth would actually grid this whole design off and break it up into sections. So each individual section then could be done by a group within an individual class, whether it be a seventh grade class, a ninth grade class, a senior career arts class. And they could work on segments of that. And then it would all be pieced together when it's installed into the wall.
It's exciting. Any other questions from our board? Any thoughts or comments? I'm looking at my screen to see if either Mr. Hester or Mr. Widowsen have any comments. Okay. Well, thanks. We appreciate the update. I mean, it, it's getting close for our, our new natatorium, our aquatics facility. And I'm getting excited. We all, as members of the board, just received our monthly construction update, and it's getting pretty exciting. So this is a, a really interesting and also exciting part of it. So thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for the work you've done to this point. And I look forward to seeing it live and in person when we're ready to unveil it. So thanks much. Dr. Mattel, please.
Yes, I wanted to make sure that board members who were not able to see the images on a screen this evening, we will send you the entire PowerPoint as well as any public members sitting here that would like to see these images or the presentation. We'll post that to our website tomorrow as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mattel. Okay. We'll turn to, we have a few more information reports this evening before we get into a brief action agenda. The next would be our student enrollment data. As of October 1st, 2020, I see the information in our backup. Dr. Mattel, do you have any commentary?
Yes, and for the public so that you're aware, we track our enrollment data every year. And we've been tracking it pretty diligently since 2001. At Seneca Valley School District, we have an enrollment coordinator, a supervisor, who funnels all of this from the buildings. She actually enrolls parents and families and students in person. And so I wanted you to be aware, I give this report to the board typically end of October, early November every year. And the state bases this on what we call our October 1 enrollment. And that's because there's often movement in schools in July, August, September. And they want to be, be sure that on October 1, that's a better snapshot of where students are physically in every school district in 501 school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. So this evening, we are comparing numbers this year to last year. Connequenesing Valley Elementary is up by eight students. Last year, they had 761 students in that building. This year, they have 769. Evan City Elementary is up by two students, 552 to 554. And bear in mind, these would include our full-time cyber. And bear in mind, these would include our full-time cyber students or hybrid students as well as in-person students. It's all of them together. The next building is Hayne Elementary. And they are up by 20, I'm sorry, down by 20 students, 856 last year, 836 this year. The next building is Rowan Elementary, 508 last year, 510 this year, up by two. The next building is Evan City Middle School, 503 last year, 489 this year, down by 14 students. The, I'm losing my spot. I apologize, tiny writing, and I'm getting older. Hayne Middle School, 630 last year, 574 this year, down by 56 students. Ryan Goyer Middle School, 1121 last year, 1147 this year, up by 26 students. Intermediate High School, 1181 last year, 1150 this year, down by 31 students. Senior High School, 1162 last year, 1196 this year, up by 34 students. Total enrollment in the district, 7,274 students last year. Total enrollment this year, this would include those that chose in-person, hybrid, or full-time cyber in Seneca Valley Academy of Choice. All of our students together, we are sitting at 7,225 as of October 1. We are down as a district by 49 students, K through 12. Now, where do those 49 go? We track them. Certainly, students move in and students move out, and we're constantly tracking where they're going. I would say the highlighted numbers where we're seeing significant differences. Last year, we had 150 students that were being homeschooled by family and parent. And this year, we're seeing 234. So we see an increase of 84 students in one year that are being homeschooled. These are not students that are tracked as external cyber charters. These are not students in our full-time cyber. These would be homeschool, and the parents are filing an affidavit that they are schooling their children at home. The next biggest category is under parochial. Last year, and these would be religious schools. Last year, we had 865 students there. We are down by 58 students going to parochial schools. We're sitting at 807 as of October 1. The next category, they are split in two, but they are all external cyber charter or external charter. So to make sure our public understands, external cyber charter is all online. It could be any school that is, that has a charter from the Pennsylvania Department of Education and was approved for that charter. If students go to an external cyber charter, the tuition bill comes back to the home district to pay that bill. And you heard me report in the last public meeting how much that tuition is for a Seneca Valley student and it's different. There's a different formula. It's like, there's one formula across the state, but it's slightly different for every district depending on your expenses. So right now, we have external cyber charters. Last year, 75. This year, 167. We are seeing that is up by 92 students, external cyber charter. The next item is charter. This would be Baden, Lincoln Park, or Westinghouse. These are charters, but they're brick and mortar. Again, the district would pay tuition for students that attend there. We're down by nine there. Forty last year, 31 this year. But overall, if we combine external cyber charter and external charter together, we are looking at 198 students this year. And that gives you a view of where the difference is. You're seeing some less in some areas, some more in others. But overall, the district is down by 49 students, which is not significant, but it's disappointing to us. Last year, we were up by 29, year after year. The year before that, 1819, overall, we were up by 72 students. 1718, we were up by 12. 1617, we were up by eight. And then 1516, we were down by 41. So you see, we haven't seen this decrease, this number of decrease since 2015-16. And there were various things going on in that year, too, with cyber charters or parochials opening in the district. So that is a view of our student enrollment. I think considering all the circumstances and, you know, dealing with a global pandemic, we're holding our numbers pretty well. I am concerned, as I've expressed to the board and as the board has expressed to our community, about the tuition bill on the external cyber charters that is paid by the district taxpayer at Seneca Valley. That is not free. External cyber charters, external charters advertise that it is free. It is not free, maybe free to the parent, but it is not free to the Seneca Valley School District. And so again, I respect everyone's right to choose. I respect parents' right to choose. But that is something we need to be concerned about in our upcoming budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Patel. This is typically where I might ask for some sense of what trends we're seeing in some of our neighboring districts. But I just don't think this is a year given everything that's going on in our community and our region and the country and around the globe, that you can really get behind what the trend may or may not be. So, but I appreciate the detail report.
Mr. President, I would like to add, if I may, that it's important to note because we've had our own cyber school at Seneca Valley for well over 12 years. We do have close to 1,200 students in full-time or hybrid cyber taught by our Seneca Valley teachers. And there is no tuition that we pay outside. Those are certainly expenses we have on the inside to pay for. But it's also another way that we believe in serving our children and meeting their needs, especially this year. But I think it's also important to point out that we were able to move a lot quicker when it came this year to having our own internal cyber school because other school districts did not have that, as evidenced by we sell seats to over 52 schools across Pennsylvania. Because perhaps they're small and maybe they don't have a Latin teacher or physics teacher or some of the things that we have. Or they want to offer more offerings to their children. Or in a year like this, they had no cyber offerings, so they came to us. And so again, I think that shows Seneca Valley's level of, we're willing to compete. And we want our children to stay here and we're willing to help and assist other public schools as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the extra clarification, Dr. Patel. Any other member of the board have any questions or comments on this? As I look around our room and as I flip into the other mode to see if Mr. Wooderson or Mr. Hester have a question. No, okay. Thank you again, Dr. Patel. We will turn to our agency reports. Mr. Peterson and I serve at the Butler County Boat Tech. We have a meeting on Thursday. So unless there's anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Peterson, we can update everyone next Monday evening, perhaps.
I think that's fair.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn to the IU4, Mr. DeTulio.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We had our meeting last Wednesday. A few items of note, we did renew the contract of Dr. Kilmeier as our executive director. That contract will run through June 30th of 2025. There was a news report up in the northern part of the state about our telepresence robot in the Brookville School District. Brookville is part of IU6, which is all of Inango County, Forest, Clarion, and Jefferson Counties and portions of Armstrong, Indiana Crawford, Warren, and Clearfield. But they do contract with IU4 for technology services. And the telepresence robot is actually a robot with a screen that the student can drive around remotely throughout the classroom, throughout the halls. It was from a grant in 2018 and allowed special needs students that were homebound to be able to, you know, have an interaction with the real school setting. So it's been very successful. And then, of course, during COVID, it's getting a little more use. But they had a very nice write-up on it. And since IU4 provides all that technology and support, we are part of that. And then we also had a presentation. I mentioned the HVAC system. It's a project that we're going to start looking for quotes on the engineering and construction. I'll be bringing back information on that as we get more. That's my report.
Is that the HBA system, C system at the IU4 building?
Yes, at the IU4 building, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeTulio. Any questions for Mr. DeTulio? Any comments from members of the board? Okay, folks, seeing none. Turn to legislative. Mr. Peterson, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I mentioned last month, and as Ms. Andrease noted earlier, tomorrow is the election, the quadrennial election, in case anybody missed it. The political reality of that is that the people's business gets set aside. And so I don't have much to report. I don't believe there's anything active in the federal or state levels. The one place where there continues to be chatter in this session of what do they call it? Not vacation session, but when they're not in session. There's a lot of talk about enhancing broadband to the rural parts of the state. Probably wouldn't impact us very much. But other than that, until the election's over and the results are in, we have a little less to report.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Yes, interesting day tomorrow, for sure. We'll turn then to our financial reports, unless there's any other dialogue around legislative. They are in our backup. They are for operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, middle school activities, athletics, food service, tax collections, and capital projects funds. As always, if you've gotten, if you've got any questions on any of those items, please feel free to turn to Ms. Burton. And our last information report before we move into our brief action agenda is our COVID-19 updates. Dr. Patel, if you would, please lead us through.
Thank you. As we know, as a school board, and hopefully our public knows, and if not, you know, I will repeat myself. And if I do, I apologize, but I want to make sure we're on the same page. So last week, we developed with our technology department a dashboard for the public, so the public could see all the known cases that we have as a school district. And again, we have to keep in mind known cases. Obviously, if people aren't reporting things to us, we may or may not know those items. So that is on, that was rolled out to all of our parents and introduced to our parents as well as our staff. And that can be found on our homepage. And we will try our best to update this every day at 3:00 PM. So the first rollout was Friday, and today at 3:00 PM, we have updated the dashboard. And this shows active cases and inactive cases. It includes known cases as reported to our nurse administrator or our school building nurses who are communicating every day, sometimes hourly, with our nurse administrator, Liz Williams, who is also a registered nurse and a school nurse. She was pulled out of her position at Ryan Goyer Middle School, and we found, we were fortunate, very fortunate to find another high-quality registered nurse to put in her stead. And Liz Williams, Nurse Williams, works on COVID tracing and contact tracing in this district every day, all day, seven days a week, and around the clock. So I want you to be aware, that's how we know that this dashboard is the best information we could have as a district. And that was updated at 3:00. It is important to note on this dashboard that cases may span across seven buildings or departments. For instance, if students trade buildings, if teachers may service more than one building. Those cases, as we know them, would be attributed to what we call their home building. You can see this from your cell phone, your mobile phone. You can also see this from your desktop. Either way, it's on our website. And like I said, we'll update every day at 3:00 PM as best we can. Active student cases in the district today, as of 3:00 PM, are nine. Now, what does active mean? That means they're in that 14-day period of knowing that they have COVID based on either a rapid COVID test and/or a PCR COVID test. And as reported to us, we usually find out from parents and/or students before the Department of Health. So sometimes there is a one, two, sometimes a three-day lag before the Department of Health will see the results in their Pennsylvania State database. So during that lag, our school nurses, our nurse administrator, our principals begin contact tracing. They look at seating charts. They look at bus charts, bus seating charts as well. And they look at the definition of close contacts, which I'll get into more in a minute. So we have nine active student cases, kindergarten through 12. And we have about 6,000 kids in our buildings physically right now. Inactive student cases, we have four across the district. That means they reported to us they had COVID. They've been out for 14 days. And/or they've been cleared by a doctor to return to school. We have four of those across the district, kindergarten through 12. Active staff cases, we have six currently. Staff would be teachers, administrators, support personnel, custodians, cafeteria. It would not include bus drivers because they are not contracted employees of the district, but we are working closely with bus companies should they have any cases. We have three inactive staff cases, which again means they've had COVID, they've recovered, and they've returned to school. One of our first cases was in July. That's included in this because we had adults 12-month administrators in our buildings. So that's one of the cases, to give you an example. Total active cases in the entire district, this is where we take student and staff and we combine them. Total active cases currently in the district in all of our buildings totals 15, total inactive is seven. If you want to break out of every building that is on this dashboard. And so for tonight, you can look at that, but I'll go through active student cases. At the senior high school, we have one active student case, no staff, active student cases. Intermediate High School, we have one active student case. And we have zero active staff cases at the intermediate high school. Ryan Goyer Middle School, three active student cases and five active student cases. Evan City Middle School, zero active student cases, zero active staff cases. Hayne Middle School, one active student case, zero active staff cases. CBE Connequenesing Valley Elementary, three active student cases and zero active staff cases. We had one staff case that has become inactive now. Evan City Elementary, zero on both accounts, on both categories. Hayne Elementary, zero in both categories. Rowan Elementary, zero in both categories. We did have one inactive student case. The Academy of Choice, this typically doesn't impact our buildings a whole lot because all of, most of these kids are out. Some could be hybrid, though. And that's why we're tracking it. Hybrid means maybe I come in for two periods a day or three periods a day, and the rest of my classes are on your Academy of Choice full-time cyber. So we are tracking it. We've had zero known student cases. And we've had, currently, we have one active staff case. But again, the staff rotates in and out of the buildings. So typically, in those situations, there's very little contact tracing, if at all. And central office, we have zero active staff cases, and we have one inactive staff case. And then at the bottom of this dashboard, we define how we contact trace, how things are determined, and what is a potential close contact. And with the active cases and any case that's reported to us, our principals actually go in, get the seating charts, and go into rooms and measure where the student was or the staff member was. Now, as you know, we require masks by our staff and by our students in all of our physical buildings, just as we're all masked this evening. It is very difficult to social distance in many of our buildings when we're here five days a week and we're not in cohort. But we also have a lot of Plexiglas. We have a lot of Plexiglas. But the Plexiglas and the mask alone, according to DOH, those items alone would not keep you off a close contact list because lots of people wear a mask improperly. And although we're constantly talking to kids and our staff has been great, students have been good, too. That we, the DOH, the Department of Health, cannot guarantee that someone within six feet for more than 15 minutes wore that mask properly the entire time they were with the person who was contagious at the time. They can also not guarantee that the person had a mask on and sat in that Plexiglas perfectly. So the Plexiglas and the mask may keep you from getting COVID and a number of other mitigations, like we spray down every room every night with misters and vital oxide disinfectant. But it may not keep you off quarantine. That's the disappointing part. I know for a fact, one of our first cases at Connequenesing Valley, a student case, I'm sorry, a staff case, 11 students were identified as close contact. And none of them contracted COVID during their time out on quarantine. So that's a good sign, but we recognize that's a small group. And we will continue to watch those that are on quarantine. We do have probably hundreds of students and/or staff together that could be out on quarantine due to family exposure, due to possible school exposure, or due to some type of community exposure for which they've been asked to quarantine. So we do know that we have quite a few out on quarantine. A lot of this is difficult to understand if you're not working with it all day, every day. But our Nurse Williams is working. And the school building nurses are working with it every day, all day. And so they are very knowledgeable and we're very thankful for their information to allow us to deliver a dashboard such as this. That's the first data point that we are looking at. Those are school numbers. The second data point that we've been looking at for a very long time is the PA DOH website. And many of you have also been there. That's a public website. And what we do is Lisa, who's sitting here with us, Lisa Mislin, goes into that PA DOH website. And you can sort that website by state, by county, and by zip codes. And that's what we do every single day. And so what we know today is that Butler County, on a 14-day rolling average, is now at 32.0. is now at thirty-two point three new cases per day. We do know, and it's been reported to us, so every Monday, I'm on a two o'clock meeting with emergency management, county commissioners, and every Butler County School District Superintendent, as well as our I U Director, as well as an infectious disease doctor expert at Butler Health System, as well as an emergency room doctor at U P M C in Cranberry, every Monday, two o'clock. We do know based off a recent meeting where there is a team in the state of Pennsylvania, it's called C React, COVID React. They are commissioned out of the governor's office. They consist of Department of Health representatives and Pennsylvania Department of Education representatives. The C React team was put together about a month ago, and they were sent to center, they chose center, um, county to begin doing some work there with the county about, you know, how can we help? And what colleges are here, or what congregate homes, or where are we seeing the numbers? And they do an analysis, and then they report back to the leaders of the county. They usually spend about three weeks with county officials, county leaders, school leaders. That C React team was deployed next to Butler County, so we're the, only the second county in the state to get their consultation services. We asked why us? And they shared with us, they are paying attention to Slippery Rock University and a congregate care home in Chikora. And while those numbers are attributed to our county numbers, which I thought colleges would not be attributed to our zip code because it's where, not where you're tested, but it's where you live that your positive case comes back on your zip code. It is my understanding that the off campus housing at Slippery Rock counts in the Butler County zip codes. So we do know those are some of the numbers. I can't tell you how many, I don't know that, but C React, that team is watching and assisting Slippery Rock University, all the schools. They met with the county commissioners, they met with the emergency management, so they've had a lot of meetings, B C three president, uh, Slippery Rock president, so there are a lot of educational leaders and a lot of county leaders that have met with this team. This team can bring four hundred tests a day, P C R tests, the more reliable, more accurate test to this county every day for three to four days. So they're trying to decide where do they want to put this testing center? And that will be up to them. That won't be a school district decision. But I want you to be aware that that is one of the reasons we're constantly tracking that P A D O H data. We also break our data in this school district down to the zip codes. And as you know, we have many communities and many different zip codes we're taking a look at. And Butler County, in that breakout, as of nine A M. Today, now remember, the data is still about a day or two behind. But as of nine A M. Today, Butler County had seventy new cases on one day from October thirty first to November first. That's out of a population of about two hundred thousand people live in Butler County. In the Seneca Valley School District, there are about fifty thousand people who live in the Seneca Valley School District. So that gives you a view of those populations. Since we last logged our stats in a spreadsheet that we share with the board, on October twenty ninth, there has been an increase of forty-seven cases in the Seneca Valley zip codes. Notable increases have been in Mars and Cranberry Township zip codes. Cranberry had seventeen additional, Mars had sixteen additional. Now, why would I track Mars? Why would we track Mars? Seven Fields is a Mars zip code. Seven Field students come to Seneca Valley. But that entire sixteen cases in Mars is not all attributed to Seneca Valley zip code, but we have no way of knowing how many of those are Seneca Valley, um, folks that live in the Seneca Valley School District versus Mars. The incident rate in our zip code, this is important to note, per one hundred thousand, has gone from forty-one cases across seven days to one hundred and five cases across seven days. So again, that's from the Department of Health, and those are data points we pull and share with the board frequently. The next data source that we're constantly looking at, I'd refer to as data source number three, because it's important to look at this data from multiple lenses, not one. And there are reasons for that. So the COVID early warning monitoring system for schools. This is a dashboard that in cooperation between the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Pennsylvania Department of Education, they put together kind of a chart for school districts to pay attention to. What about when you get cases? When should you be concerned? And so this chart, as we look at this, we see that the county saw fifty-six new cases in the last seven days. That's October twenty-third through twenty-ninth. One day of cases in Butler County, I mentioned, November one, saw seventy new cases. The incident rate for one hundred thousand is eighty-eight point four. Okay, so that's important to recognize, about two hundred thousand folks in the county. And then you hear people talk about this P C R percent positivity rate. That is, the P C R test is the more reliable test. The rapid test, people also get results back quickly. The P C R is taking about two to three, two to four days to get results back, but it is more accurate, more reliable, according to the health officials. That positivity rate, when we first opened school, ranged between one point five and two point four. Now it is at six percent. If we get to ti- ten percent on the positivity rate, we know this county, not this district, but this whole county, will be moved to what's called substantial. The C React team is watching that. If we get to ten percent, and we could by this Friday, we don't know what the numbers will be from the Halloween holiday indoor parties or anything else that may be going on in our community. Indoor settings is what the health officials have told us to be most concerned about, and gatherings in indoor settings, especially large ones. If we get to ten percent and we go to substantial, this board will need to make a decision about the model of learning for which our students are currently enrolled in. The next item is a press release from the Pennsylvania Department of Health. It was released on Saturday. It is another data source. And I think it's important to point out, a data point for schools that they ask us to consider is infection rate based on age. There are over, oh, let's see what I've got here. Two million individuals who have tested negative to date. And of those who tested positive, we find this interesting as schools. The age breakdown is as follows. Approximately one percent are testing positive in ages zero to four. Approximately two percent are ages five to twelve. Approximately five percent are ages thirteen to eighteen. And then the percentages go up higher from there, fourteen percent, thirty-six percent, and on and on for age brackets. But the ones that we need to be concerned about as schools is ages five to twelve, two percent. Ages thirteen to eighteen, five percent. So you see there's a difference between elementary and secondary, uh, students who are, um, getting the virus and, um, testing positive. Okay, so at this point, in the public presentation, we talked about COVID last month as well. We talked about targeted temporary closures. And we talked about the following criteria as guidelines. We can do five to seven day closures, and we can do fourteen day closures. Um, in, in our district, we are monitoring and really watching closely four to five cases in any given building. What's difficult about this dashboard that we've created is you don't have context. And to give more of that context is difficult in order to protect people's privacy. What you don't know is if there are two cases in one building, they could be siblings, and that's considered household contact. And the source could also be household contact. For instance, when Nurse Williams interviews folks and, you know, you're only relying on the information they're sharing, and if they're being honest and truthful, a majority of our cases have been, a child got it from a parent, a child got it from a grandparent. And those have been a majority of our sources. At Ryan Goyer, again, we were seeing and we knew the sources of where people were reporting they were getting COVID. But as of last week, we had at least two teachers who didn't know how they got it. And we had at least two students who didn't know how they got it. And they indicate that they were not in large group gatherings outside of school. And so that's another reason, when you hit that five number and you can't trace to the source, that's another reason we felt justified in closing that building for fourteen days. Why fourteen versus five to seven? Fourteen days puts us at the last known COVID person in that building that they would hopefully be recovered in the next fourteen days. And it keeps, uh, that, that's disrupting the transmission. But as you know, if people are catching this outside of school, that transmission cannot be controlled by us. We do know, based on the Department of Health talking with schools, that schools are doing a pretty good job considering the circumstances with their in-person learning. That schools are enforcing universal masking in our schools, that we bought a lot of Plexiglas, and that helps, won't stop it, but it helps. Kids in this district are being very compliant, and so are the adults. So, you know, we have all these mitigations. You've heard me talk about them, the cleaning, the disinfecting every night, the misters, the sprayers, the, um, study we did in July on our H vac systems and how we could change those filters out um, more frequently, and there are just so many different mitigations that we've put in place. But if we need to have a targeted temporary closure, I'm prepared to do that. I will certainly let the board know as soon as I can. But in the case of Ryan Goyer, we had to make a decision by six thirty, and we had information coming in at six fifteen and six twenty about cases. So, um, we believe we did the right thing in that building, and we, um, needed to react quickly, and we did. And I will tell you, our families and our parents have been very understanding and very flexible in that building. We know that we also need to keep an eye on other buildings where there are cases. And if those numbers climb, we are prepared to do temporary closures, targeted temporary closures of those buildings as well. I think that's all I have for now, Board, unless you have questions or comments about my COVID update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Vitale. Uh, I will turn to members of our board to see if there are any questions of Dr. Vitale, any, any comments around her updates. I'm looking in our room. I don't see any hands, and I don't see Mr. Woodson or Mr. Hester. Okay, uh, seeing no questions, uh, thank you for the detail. Thank you, uh, to everyone involved, uh, whether it's Ms. Williams, uh, uh, Lisa Mislin, uh, Dr. Vitale, and everybody else who's worked very hard to keep on top of all the data around, uh, what's going on in the district and in our region. Uh, with that, we will turn to our action agenda, uh, and for folks that may or may not be new, who are watching us remotely, uh, this is more of a work session where we talk through and work through all the different topics and take action on most of them in our second meeting. But we do have a few items that needed to be acted on today. Uh, as we launch into that, uh, this is typically where we allow uh, some members of the district, some of our constituencies to come and speak to us. Uh, we do have one request this evening for public comment. Um, that is from, uh, Mr. Rich. I want to make sure I pronounce the last name. Is it Servie? Serva, thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Serva is, uh, representing his household, and it looks like one other. Uh, they live on, uh, two oh eighty Speed Spring in Zillinople. Um, my guess is that that would be, I'm looking in the wrong direction. Mr. Jacobs is, uh, your representative on the board. Um, we're gonna welcome you to the microphone. Uh, we typically ask you to sort of limit your comments to around four minutes. You're the only person making comment tonight, so to the extent you take a little longer than that, then we're happy to have you take a little longer. I'll keep a timer. Uh, I'll, I'll let you know when you're getting close, but that doesn't mean, you know, wrap up this second, just to give you some guidance. So please, uh, welcome to the microphone.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, first thing is, is, uh, we are seeing a lot of, my household is actually two, two households in one. We have, uh, three different school districts. Um, we are not three different rural districts, three different buildings. We're in the intermediate, Ryan Goyer and C V E, so we're actually seeing a lot of, um, reactions with the COVID. Um, my daughter's class had one, my son's class now is shut down. But, um, a lot of what we're seeing though is, right after the schools did come back eh, out of high, uh, the cohorts, um, we had a child go to the nurse talking about a headache, and he was quarantined for fourteen days home. Um, these are something that we were like really shocked with. This was in the Ryan Goyer School. We explained to the nurse when we were on the phone with them that my son had a headache, he's dehydrated, he takes medication every day. Um, he was sent home, quarantined for fourteen days. He just told a thirteen year old child how they can get home and play video games half the day rather than coming to school and dealing with teachers in person. Um, he basically told every child that at the same time, which is really concerning. Excuse me. Um, with the social distancing that we were, Miss, uh, Dr. Vitale was talking about, my children are actually reporting, there isn't, there's very little sometimes in their classrooms. One of the children, one of the ones that were reported last Sunday as having an open case because it was in the classroom. My daughter told me they were just playing side by side in the classroom at one point when the child was still there, because we knew who it was. And we're not going to say names, of course. But we knew who it was, and my daughter told us that. We've never been contacted it's past Sunday, besides the email telling us that it was in her classroom, that there was a chance of a case. So we took precautions ourselves and started temping her. She actually started reaching a high temperature shortly after that, and we were never contacted about having her tested. We ta- we personally went to the hospital and had her tested. So we're not seeing anything from that as parents on what, why nothing was taken care of at that point from the school and letting us know how to proceed, because we were lost. We weren't sure. We were calling her doctor, and they weren't helping us as well. We actually had to go to the emergency room to have her tested. We're seeing our children report back that we're not seeing temp checks on any children when they come in unless they're late for the school themselves. That is the only time my children have said they have been tested for temperatures or anything. So why were we, why are we not checking these children? Yes, it takes a little bit longer, but we can catch a lot of their early symptoms right off the bat with our children going to school. Sorry. One other thing that we did notice, we were actually at the intermediate high school, um, two, two week, two, sorry, fourteen days ago roughly. Um, we're watching U P S workers who, of course, everybody knows, when they deliver packages, they're going in there, out of different buildings, walk right in the building, not get checked, not get screened, walk right through the second door, um, right into the building, right up here. Where was the check on that? When there's, that person goes in and deals with a hundred different people, and those hundred different people will deal with a hundred more, and you've got more chance of an outbreak from somebody going from building to building like that. A lot of these questions, it's not just me. We've talked in our neighborhoods, we, you know, people get, talk together, talk online, social media is out there. A lot of us are worried, like, what is really happening? What are we doing about this? Because these are things we're not just seeing at one building, but multiple buildings. There's really nothing else I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come tonight. Um, you know, we've had some speakers online in the last four, five, or six months. Uh, you know, I, I also usually try and give you a, uh, a sense of what to expect when you come to the microphone. This isn't necessarily a forum where we get into a lot of active dialogue and Q and A. Um, this is an opportunity for you to be heard. Uh, we do receive a lot of different correspondence. Uh, if you pick up the agenda in the back, you'll see that we, this was a pretty average, uh, month, give or take, uh, with the number of emails that we received. Um, I would tell you that, I, I know Dr. Vitale was taking a lot of copious notes as you, uh, relayed some different things. Uh, I was going to ask whether or not you'd had the opportunity to or dialogued with the building principals, uh, of any of the buildings where your children are. Typically, that's, if people reach out to me via phone, I suggest they, have you, have you had those conversations? Not that I want to dis- dissuade people from coming to the microphone. You're always free to do that, but I do wonder aloud, have you had the opportunity to dialogue with anybody, or have you reached out to someone in the district to speak to a member of our administration?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and, uh, uh, I'm not sure how responsive they've been. Um, you certainly are here this evening, so you want to make sure your voice was heard. Um, and to the extent that there's some follow-up, uh, we certainly have your contact information here. And, uh, I'll have a dialogue with Dr. Vitale and some other members of the administration following the meeting. Uh, Dr. Vitale, would like to comment?
Yes, so we will check with the building principals where your children are. I would say that even as a parent myself, when I give social media the one I look, like, I know I shouldn't look, but I want to see what people are saying, not here, in other, uh, where my children go. It escalates my own emotions, and I'm studying this every day. So I would highly encourage you to, if you want to know an answer, call the building principal or speak to the nurse. They have firsthand knowledge. They're not going to be able to give you names. That's first thing. If you've already done that, I'll know because I'll talk to them tomorrow. But I want to address temperature checks. Every building has temperature scanners. The kids don't even know their temperatures are being checked. It grabs at least twenty students at a time, and including me, when I walk in the building, and my temperature is scanned, even though I'm doing it at home and I'm doing a self-check and I'm reporting it like every other employee. I want you to know that we bought these temperature scanners because we wanted them to be discreet, and we did not want to scare children. Every child is checked every morning. We have administrators running those at different doors, because in these bigger buildings, you know, there's more than one entrance. We have teachers that run them in the morning. You know, there are a lot of We have teachers that run them in the morning. You know, there are a lot of adults standing there checking. But your child probably doesn't even know they've been scanned as far as their temperature is concerned. These were, these are very expensive devices. Although the doctors told us and the public health officials told us. Temperature is not a universal symptom. That people can get COVID, not have a temperature at all. We still bought those. Because we thought, well, even if it's the flu or something else, if any child has a fever. And the parent didn't check in the morning, which parents are supposed to, as I'm supposed to as a parent. If a parent didn't check, then we wanted this as an extra layer. So that when I talk about mitigations, that's what I mean. There's not one mitigation in this district that is going to um stop. I don't know that any will, right? We're doing our very best to put extra layers of mitigations in place. So that we can slow down the virus as best we can. None of it is perfect. You know, you want to know how to not get the virus? Stay in your home and never leave. And most of us are not agreeable to that, and this board decided that that was not right by a majority of our children. And so um that's the only sure way not to get it. Stay in your home, don't leave, and then monitor who's coming in and out of your home, right? So I I did want to share those comments that every person's temperature is checked. Although parents are supposed to be doing it, we do it again. And so when you say they're coming in late and they're getting a temperature checked, that's because people are now off the temperature scanners. And they're doing it otherwise probably manually. Every athlete gets their temperature checked. And the final item on mail people, initially, they did not want to wear masks into our building, and we said in, in our buildings, plural, and we said, no, we can't come in without them. So I know for a fact. That every one of them has a mask. Their temperature has been taken, taken in the morning at their postal service or at their postal delivery, whoever they're working for. Every bus driver's temperature is taken. So again, the doctors have told us that's not a universal symptom. Not everybody gets a fever. So I just want to speak to that, that everyone is. Now, do we interview every postal worker? No. But their companies have mitigations in place for them to even get in the vehicle to come deliver mail.
Thank you, Dr. Patel. Uh and again, I'll just conclude by saying thank you for coming. Thank you for speaking. Um. And please, you're always welcome back. Thank you. Okay, then with that, we will turn to the brief action agenda. Uh I will make the motions. Uh I would make a motion with regards to the personnel action items that we uh have detailed in our backup and were discussed in executive session. That is to approve a resignation. Appointments, leaves, and retirement. And regarding transportation contracts, to approve the following transportation contracts for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. Detail on those contracts is in your backup. Uh first is for two families. To transport their children to D T Watson, and the second is for one family to transport their child to Butler Catholic. So that is my motion. May I have a second, please? Second, Mr. Detulio, thank you. Is there any discussion with regards to the transportation contracts only, given we've already discussed in executive session, the personal action items? Okay, seeing none. Uh Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Wooderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Detulio?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you, Lisa. Next week, we will also seek a motion on the following items. That would be to approve. Our minutes uh there for the work session on October fifth of twenty twenty and the regular meeting on October twelfth. Of twenty twenty. Uh those minutes are in your backup. The treasurer's report also detailed in your backup, the general fund bills. Detail is in your backup. That is in the grand total of one million, four hundred and seventy seven thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty five cents. And the construction fund bills also detail provided in your backup. And the grand total of two million, four hundred and eighty one thousand, one hundred and twenty four dollars and twenty four cents. If you have any questions on any of those items, please feel free to reach out uh to uh myself or to Ms. Burtner or to Dr. Patel. With that, we'll turn to our administration action items, and I'd ask Mr. Petullo to lead us through those.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next week, I will make a motion that we approve the following. Board policies to approve the following board policies, and these are all in our backup. Policy number nine oh two, publications program revised first reading. Policy nine oh three, public participation in board meetings revised first reading. And policy nine oh seven, school visitor revised first reading. Also, we will look to retire the following policies. Policy number two forty eight, sexual harassment students, you know, retire first and final reading. Policy number three forty eight, sexual harassment administration employees, sorry, administrative employees retire first and final reading. Policy four forty eight, sexual harassment professional employees retire first and final reading. Policy five forty eight, sexual harassment classified employees retire first and final reading. Policy two forty eight point one, unlawful harassment students retire first and final reading. Policy number three forty eight point one, unlawful harassment administrative employees retire first and final reading. Policy four forty eight point one, unlawful harassment professional employees retire first and final reading. And policy five forty eight point one, unlawful harassment classified employees retire first and final reading. And we'll also look to approve the resolution to sue Jewel Labs Incorporated. To approve the commencement of a civil suit as part of a multi-district litigation against Jewel Labs Incorporated and other distributors and marketers of vaping products. arising from the design, marketing, and advertising of vaping products targeting minors. And for such purpose, approve the contingent fee agreement with France Law Group, A P L C. Dylan McCannlis, King, Colter, and Graham, L L P, and Tucker Arnsberg, P C, as provided in our backup. And fi- well, not filing, but the next item would be the Votec J O C representatives and alternate. To appoint Mr. Frederick Peterson, Jr. and Mr. Michael Jacobs as the Butler County Area Vocational Technical School Joint Operating Committee. B C A V T S J O C representatives and Mr. James Nickel as the B C A V T S J O C alternate. And finally, we'll look to approve the agreement for Slippery Rock Transition Achievement Program. To approve the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania State System of Higher Education Agreement for Slippery Rock Transition Achievement Program as provided in our backup.
Thank you, Mr. Detulio. Uh I'll look around to the board to see if anybody has any questions. Or any commentary on any of these items other than the resolution to sue Jewel Labs. I think we're gonna have some dialogue from. Mr. Hoffman and possibly Dr. Patel on that topic. So um I'm looking up to Ms. Whittle. Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. My comment is about the Votec, and I want to publicly thank yourself and Mr. Peterson. For the work and involvement that you, not only do we put in a lot of hours. With this district, you also extend your time and your commitment to the Votec. And for you, um Jeff, for, I mean, Mike, to uh step into that role as well, and you kind of know what you're getting into. Um I want to thank you, and I appreciate all the effort, all your feedback as you bring it back to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Whittle. Anyone else, Mr. Detulio?
Two items. Uh thank you for your service for the J O C. Um I know that you have done a lot of work up there to to really help things out. Uh when we were financially uh struggling and through some transition and the executive team, not once but twice now. Um and you've done a wonderful job over the years, so thank you for all that, that effort. The, the other question that I had was on these policies, uh it's more of a clarification. Because we are retiring policy, this is something that I don't remember doing before. So just to get a feel, and I know that we have replacements, so I don't want anyone to think that we're not making sure that we have a policy on sexual harassment, but I just want to understand the process a little bit more, so. It's your off medical issue.
Sure. I mean, that's actually a question I asked earlier this afternoon of Ms. Boback. Um Ms. Boback, if you could. Go off mute and maybe just sort of from a macro sense, uh respond to Mr. Detulio's question.
Yes, good evening. Um yes, you are accurate, uh Mr. Detulio, that the recent adoption of policy one oh three and one oh four. Uh which was discrimination Title Nine Sexual Harassment Affecting Students. Was one oh three, one oh four was discrimination Title Nine Sexual Harassment Affecting Staff. Uh the, that addresses not just Title Nine requirements, but also sexual harassment and discrimination. And as well as other discrimination harassment laws and regulations. So with that being said. Uh that kind of has an umbrella policy for all, which is why this evening we're asking you to retire. Um the ones noted on the agenda, which is sexual harassment and unlawful discrimination.
Ms. Boback? You good? Okay. Anyone else? Questions uh for anything in here other than the uh the Jewel Labs lawsuit? I'm not seeing. Any hands. So we will turn to that item. It was something we were going to at least discuss on an informationally basis in our earlier session. We did not. So Dr. Patel, I'm not sure how you want to walk through this, but I'll turn it to you.
Sure. Well, I don't think it's any surprise to this board. We have been talking about vaping for several years. And our concern about teenagers vaping and teenagers vaping at school. That we've tried to control in the restrooms. We bought vape detectors. And at first, those vape detectors were difficult um to get readings off of, so they had to be calibrated. And now they're working quite well. And so I think the word has gotten out with students, but. You know, it has been disappointing that it's taken this long for us to finally get the attention of. Lawyers and lawmakers about this. Um there's no doubt when you have flavors like cotton candy and Skittles and things like that, that you're definitely marketing children. And we've been talking for a very long time about. It's not, you know, many parents still think that, well, it's better than a cigarette. Well, the research is showing us that it's not. And uh both are bad. And what's more concerning, we've been meeting with uh medical officials on this topic as well. Who have been very concerned about the coil inside of the vape. And the metal that's leaching into the vapors and into our children's lungs. And while we're concerned about adults too, adults have free choice. Uh you might argue the children have free choice, but they are minors. And so um tonight, we make an official recommendation that we join the national lawsuit against Jewel Labs. Mr. Hoffman can walk us through the legal sides of this. But um we are busy, and certainly right now, it's not that we have time to gather this data, but this is a priority. And I guess if there's ever been a time to really educate people about their lungs, it's certainly during a pandemic and and more people are listening. But we're learning more and more research about just how bad these vapes are. Beyond the vapor. It's not just water, you know, metal and carcinogens and nicotine. And the amount of nicotine in the vapes, this is all, none of this is new to our teachers. And to educators who have been very concerned about this for a long time. Um so we'll have Mr. Hoffman explain the legal side. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitell. So um what has occurred over the last uh uh year or two is that there is a variety of school systems. Across the country that have initiated litigation against vaping uh device and product manufacturers and distributors. Jewel is one of them. Altria has another well-known name, Philip Morris, and there are several others. And that litigation ultimately got consolidated in a, into an action um that's uh out of the Northern District of California in San Francisco. So that's sort of the, now the lead court, if you will, for administering this litigation. And uh if the district uh decides to join that effort, uh what would be involved is that uh a complaint would be filed on behalf of the district. Uh in the federal court here in Pittsburgh. And then that case would automatically get joined to the national litigation, the multi-district litigation. Uh again, that's being administered out of the uh this, the federal court in San Francisco. The uh resolution that you have before you um not only authorizes that suit, but engages. A firm of France Law Group uh who is uh the lead counsel in the national litigation. Uh to uh represent the district's interests. Uh they are, you know, uh knee deep, neck deep, I suppose. Uh in terms of gathering data uh and and in conducting discovery and getting information from the various manufacturers and distributors. In order to uh advance the case against them. You also see reference to Dylan McCannlis and King, that's a law firm out of Butler. Uh they have uh uh worked with this other group. Uh in Western Pennsylvania to assist with just the procedural aspects of filing the litigation. And then, of course, you see our firm in, in there as well, um for the purpose of monitoring the Seneca Valley District's participation. Um in, in the litigation, should the board decide to go forward. The uh retention of the national law firm as well as uh the, the two local firms is, would be based upon a contingent fee agreement. Comparable to what you might have for like a personal injury case, you know, you see the one lawyer, there's no fee unless we get money for you. The same uh concept applies here. Uh there is no financial investment on the part of the district to participate in this litigation. And the investment uh would be limited to gathering and providing data specific to our district. To be used in the litigation. Uh there is, out of the uh, the main court, a set of questions. Uh that have been approved by the court that the district would have to answer. That would be the investment uh by this district. Uh again, not to minimize it, that would take some administrative time in order to complete. Uh but uh Dr. Vitell and none of our administrators are going to be asked to testify in court. But not be asked to participate in any depositions. Uh it's uh, our participation would be uh limited to providing information. So um that's the procedural side of it. Uh as Dr. Vitell indicated. Uh the effort here is to try to hold these various manufacturers accountable for their marketing practices directed to youth.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Uh any closing words, Dr. Tal, or?
No, but I fully support the board moving in this direction.
Sure. Uh I'll look around to my colleagues on the board to see if anyone has any comments. Uh Mr. Peterson, please.
It probably goes without saying that I could not be more supportive of taking this direction. I urge my colleagues on the board to vote aye uh at the proper time. The uh, the insidiousness of uh this um jewel device and others like it is just incredible. Uh as Dr. Vitell mentioned, it's sold with flavors to clearly meant to appeal to younger kids, uh not high school kids, but younger kids. And it's um, it's often been touted as a way to wean people from. The traditional cigarettes, use of tobacco-based products. And um, well, apparently it works for some. There's no guarantee that that's going to happen. And in fact, because the nicotine content of the jewel oil sometimes is higher than tobacco. Uh it, it amplifies the addiction to the, to the use of the, the device. So I just uh speak loudly in favor of our joining this effort to. Rain in the jewel folks and and call a spade a spade here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Is there anyone else who would like to make comments? Uh Mr. Jacobs?
Maybe just a procedural question. Mr. Hoffman, we're approving the commencement and the agreement with the, with the attorneys. Will we subsequently review our complaint that'll be filed here in Pennsylvania, or how will that transpire?
Uh certainly, uh the board can be provide that opportunity. It, it's the same complaint that um many other districts have filed. Uh I can tell you, um in, in this region, Pittsburgh Public Schools. Uh North Hill School District, um Butler School District, uh and several others have already filed a complaint. Um I can get those materials to you um to review between now and and next week. Uh but the complaint is pretty much a template.
And we, we put in our information relative to the damages for our district.
Um you're not uh reciting the specific damages at this time. Um they're generally identified in the complaint uh along the lines of what Dr. Vitell indicated. Uh vaping detection devices, uh educational programming, uh the diversion of staff to address, uh you know, the use of vaping in schools. Uh so they're, they're sort of categorically described in the complaint.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Anyone else? Uh I would echo both Dr. Patel's and and Mr. Peterson's sentiment that I'm absolutely in favor of joining the suit. Uh I can tell you that it's just anecdotal. I don't see it necessarily in our buildings in Seneca Valley, because I'm not in them. But my son is a uh student at Virginia Tech, and it's an epidemic there. I mean, it's. Every, it feels like every four out of five young men and young women are vaping, and it just, it frightens me. Frightens me for my son and frightens me for the students here at Seneca Valley. So thank you very much. Uh we'll turn to instruction action items. Ms. Harrison?
Yes, thank you. Um next week, we'll be looking to approve the following instruction action item. Be conferences, approved conferences is provided in the backup.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Uh there were, I think, two conferences. Any questions from anyone on those two conference items? Okay, we'll turn to business and finance action items. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you. Five business and finance actions for next.
Thank you. Five business and finance actions for next week. First is December bills. Authorize the administration to pay the December bills. Um, second is supplies and equipment bids. Authorize administration to seek bids for supplies and equipment for the 2021, 2022 school year. The third is the joint purchasing agreement with the MIU four approved, the joint purchasing agreement with the Midwestern Intermediate Unit Four for 2021. That backup will be provided this week. Fourth is the budget transfers. Approve budget transfers as included in the backup. And the last item is artificial turf, turf contract award. Approve Field Turf USA Inc. through Keystone Purchasing Network KPN vendor agreement for the installation of artificial turf at the upper middle school practice field in the amount of $795,605.22. Solicitor has approved and reviewed the final agreement, which is also included in the backup.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Does anyone have any questions on these items? Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, so I've been trying. I, I just can't quite picture this, um, the field for artificial turf. And, um, if Dr. Vitell could sort of help me locate it and then what, what athletics and what level is this field used for?
I know Mr. Miller's online as well.
Yes, Randy Miller and Heather Lewis would be best to address this. I can address it, but I won't get the details right like they can. They have the history and, right?
High levels.
Okay.
Peterson, I can, uh, I can speak to that in terms of the location. Uh, it's the area right now that's being utilized as our staging and lay down area for the construction of the aquatic facility. Uh, so it's torn up pretty well. Uh, that contract currently calls for that area to be, uh, rough graded, final graded, seeded, uh, to be able to be restored back to a, uh, practice field with, uh, grass and seeding. Uh, it's located right at the, right, uh, to the south of, uh, Ryan Gleyer Middle School Dock. Uh, so that's the area that we, and it's also used for some track and field event. Uh, that is used for middle school football, uh, and it's also used for physical education during the day for, uh, for outdoor classroom.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. You always have the answer. I appreciate it.
It doesn't need to be Mr. DiTullio, I think, Paul? I, I was just going to ask, uh, Ms. Lewis to talk about all the other sports that we'll be using this because this is a, a utility field. And just so.
Yeah, we will use it, um, for, it will be lined for football and soccer. Um, one of the things we have to be mindful of is with the new elementary building construction, we will lose our middle school field. We currently, well, up and through this year, played middle school football at Evan City. So we have to prepare for that. So we are able to bring the middle school program on campus, which has always been my preference to have our teams on campus. So we will bring our middle school team on campus. We'll be able to play them in next year and then be able to shift our other teams off of next year to use that field. So it'll be used every single day and then it'll be a, um, it is actually going to be laid in a way that we will also be able to do, uh, track discus throwing events on it, um, which is current, that field is also our current, uh, track and field throwing area for discus. Sort of multi-purpose. And then obviously soccer teams will be able to use it and, and, and any other team really.
So, good. Uh, I, I did trade a note with, uh, uh, Mr. Miller on this, just to remind me, um, some of the different dialogue we've had on this. This is something that it was, uh, earlier this year, we did authorize, uh, seeking bids for this. Um, uh, Ms. Burtner, I'll put you on the spot just briefly. I apologize for doing so, but I assume this is some funding that's coming out of, uh, some of our capital projects funds, whether it's, you know, any one of our, uh, our bond issuances or our capital reserve?
Yes, when this project was approved, it was approved as a capital expenditure through the 2015, uh, bond issue. And that bond issue specifically was for a variety of capital needs throughout the district.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Burton. Any other questions from members of the board on any of these business and finance action items? Okay, not seeing any. We'll turn to personnel action. Uh, Mr. Whitterson?
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. As usual, we will be setting aside some time for a personnel, uh, executive session for next week.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whitterson. We will indeed. Uh, we are, as you see in our agenda, in receipt of numerous pieces of correspondence. And I will assure you, as I have, uh, in the last three or four months, that, uh, each and every member of the board receives each and every piece of this correspondence. And I can speak for myself and I think for every member of the board that we all take the time to read through each. So we appreciate you sending them across. Uh, before we move to a motion to adjourn, just checking to see if there's any new business. Uh, Mr. DiTullio?
Just wanted to give everyone an update on the PISA election. Uh, I just got notification today that they are actually going to cast lots to determine the, the ballot placement. So we're getting closer. They still don't have the list compiled fully, but they're going to start designing the, the ballot to get it ready to be sent out. So hopefully in the next uh, three weeks or so, we should be seeing more on that. And as soon as I get more information, I will update everyone.
Thank you, Mr. DiTullio. Anyone else from the board, anything to note before we seek a motion to adjourn? Okay, seeing no hands, uh, could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Mr. DiTullio may have a second. Ms. Harrison, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Okay, folks. Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you all. For those who are still online for joining us this evening, we'll be back here again next week on Monday at the night. Thank you again.